Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, July 20th, 2020. Roll call, Ms. Gunther.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Mary Waite.
Yep, Mary is muted.
Mary, unmuted.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yeah.
John Noons.
Yeah.
I think that's everyone. Thank you very much, Ms. Gunther. As a reminder, per Governor Baker's orders, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. The meeting will be conducted remotely. Members of the public can access this meeting via livestream at youtube.com/DHSTVmedia. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 9 and 18 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 p.m., Friday at 6:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. I would like to take this opportunity to thank once again Mr. Parati for his support with conducting these remote Zoom meetings. And it wouldn't be possible without him and the support of his students during the school year. Excuse me. That being said, at this time, we have allowed a few minutes for public comment. Ms. Gunther, have you received any emails on public comment?
Not at this time.
Perfect. So as a reminder, we will revisit the public comment section towards the tail end of this meeting. And anyone wishing to comment on tonight's meeting, on any of tonight's agenda items, can do so by emailing KathleenGunther@DartmouthSchools.org. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of July 6, 2020.
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the regular session minutes of July 6, 2020.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion, but I'd like to make a minor modification. Ms. Waite noted on the minutes as both being present and not present. So if we could update that, that would be great.
Perfect.
There's nothing of substance, so I think we can just approve it and make that change. It's not a big deal.
Per those edits. Thank you, Kate, for taking care of that. So I have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Amaral, a second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. Roll call, please.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Mary Waite.
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
John Noons.
Yes.
Thank you, Kate, and thank everyone. Next up on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gifford, a presentation on curriculum relating to anti-racism, equity, and diversity.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So tonight, we are going to have Director of Teaching and Learning Tracy Olivera present some of the things that the district is already doing to ensure that all of our students throughout the district are supported, are treated with respect, that we acknowledge and value all people. And I just want to say that as we continue this conversation, we will be looking forward to the fall, however, school gets back in service here, and what more we can do and take a real thoughtful look at the Dartmouth Public Schools' curriculum, initiatives, et cetera, to see what else we can do to, as I said, ensure that all of our students feel respected, welcomed, supported in our district. So with that, I'll let Tracy take over and present what we are currently doing right now.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Gifford, and good evening, everyone. I'm just going to take a minute to share my screen with you. Hopefully, this will work remotely. So today, I'm going to talk about a culturally responsive education. So I broke this presentation up into two parts. So what we're currently doing, and then how we're increasing this work around the diversity in light of what's happening, current events in our nation. And I also looked at diversity in two ways. One, explicitly how it's taught in our standards. So I first went and looked at social studies and health, started pulling out exactly where we were looking at it and where we were teaching it. And then I also looked at places where we integrate cultural responsive education into other standards, where we just kind of try to go after those more than one standard at the same time. So I think I can change this. To start with, what is culturally responsive education? So it really requires individuals to be culturally competent. So we're looking at this competency to have an awareness of one's own culture and also views about differences and the ability to learn and build on other people's culture. So what are community norms around culture? What are the standards? How do things differ within families? And try to be understanding and accepting of all that. It's critical in this work that educators have a knowledge and a capacity to serve all of our students. We want everyone to find their place within our curriculum. Educators have to be developed in understanding of students' abilities and their school committees and their school communities, and to ensure their experiences in school are affirming to who they are, but also who they bring to, and who they are, and what they bring to the community. Just trying to do multiple things there. So when we talk about curriculum, I always have to bring it back what we're talking about. So we're talking about the whole, I want to say, the whole gambit. So what are our units, our lessons? We lay out what teachers do every single day and every single week. What assignments do we have? What activities are we having kids do? What projects are students working on? And then also, what books and materials and videos are kids accessing in class? And also, what do we send them home with? So it's really important, and one thing we've strived to do over the last few years especially, is to fill our libraries and what our kids are working on with a very diverse books, activities, assignments, to really understand what the world is like and to understand other people's perspectives. One interesting thing that has, Desi has done that I personally felt was, they really hit the nail on the head, is when they came out with the new History and Social Studies Framework, they built it on three pillars. So they built it on the content standards, what we were used to seeing in our History and Social Studies standards. Then they also linked it into Standards for History and Social Studies Practice. And that was kind of like, what does this look like? What skills do we want kids to do? Not just the knowledge, but what do we want them doing and understanding? And then they also linked it to the literacy standards for history and social science. So that was always part of our literacy standards, but it just brought it to light. So when I talked earlier about places where we talk about diversity and racism, it's not just in our history standards, but it also comes out in other places, especially in reading and writing, because we filled our classrooms with books about diversity. And we'll be getting into that a little bit more. But this was a great kind of philosophy that Desi came out with that really worked in helping us to expand some of what we're doing in our classrooms. When I first started this task of putting together, I pulled out the social studies standards, and I just started pulling out any words that went with diversity, culture, racism. And I was, I'll be quite honest, a little overwhelmed by how many words were there and how much we do do in it. So this is just a little picture of all the different words, all the different subjects, categories, units that we do kind of focus on this. So I'm going to break that down for you a little bit. And I also have the little heart on the other side for social emotional learning, and that just came from my health curriculum. So if I start with social emotional learning, I'm very proud and pleased to say I think it's something that Dartmouth does very, very well. Since Dr. Gifford has come here, we've always had a theme across the year. And as you all know, it's always been you matter, I matter, kindness matters, really homing in on that social emotional. We are all one here. We are accepting of everybody. I think our unified program is one that's just grown throughout the years and is just a strong example of how we incorporate everyone into our box and accept everyone. We've done our Second Steps programs also address that, PBIS. I think Buddy Benches is another great example how we are trying to really be an inclusive community in our schools and how we teach that. So I'm just going to go quickly over the next two slides. I know you got these ahead of time. And this is just the content areas for history and social studies. So that one pillar I talked about earlier, they really broke them up into categories across grade levels. So as you can see, the ones in red really have a strong focus on diversity and a strong focus on cultures. And we start, we really start in kindergarten with how are we a community and how do we work together? And then in second grade, we talk a lot about the cultures of different cultures of people. But in third grade, we really start honing in Massachusetts. What are the different things in Massachusetts? How does Massachusetts came to be? We really even dig into Dartmouth in our third grade standards, which is just one of those fun things where we see what do we have in our town of Dartmouth? What are some things that we do? And if we go on to the next slide, it just goes into grade six and seven really focused on world geography and ancient civilization. But grade eight really takes over the civic life and Massachusetts government. And one great thing that the new history standards did is really almost put in a civics course that each of our students will kind of participate in, in grade eight. So we took all of our middle school standards, and we kind of squished them into grade six and seven, and they built civics course for our grade eight students. And at the end of grade eight, they do a civic project, which you'll be hearing more about as our year unfolds, but it's a student-led project about how they can change the world or how they can change their community or what they're looking to do. So that is a great example of how we're trying to put some of this ability to change into students' hands. The other kind of pillar that we were looking at, that I was talking about, is what we call the History and Social Studies Practices. So there's seven of them, and I just pulled one out right now, which was called Determine Next Steps and Take Informed Actions. And as you can see in bold, starting in grades three and five, they really start talking about diverse peers. So how do we engage in academic discussions respectfully with diverse peers? And then in grade six and eight, you can see how it builds upon that and kind of moves up to 12th grade. So we want to explore questions or problems in the form of classroom discussions or essays or research papers. And we've really dug into a lot, especially in our elementary schools, about the essays and research papers and writings where we've incorporated books, which I'll talk about in a little bit more. But we've kind of had that discourse in our classrooms about diversity and race. So this is just a guiding principle, which I, when I was doing the research into pulling this together a little bit, I went back to this guiding principle because I just thought it was interesting when these came out a few years ago, that they really still are hammering in that bold sentence where we must tell the histories of individuals and groups and honor that life of people and where it is still an ongoing struggle to achieve a perfect union. So we're still working on that, and that is a guiding principle of what we kind of go by. If I look at that third pillar that I talked about for the History and Social Studies standards, where they integrate the literacy, this is just, I don't know if you've heard about it, we've done a lot of work around this with our teachers called windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors. So I'm just going to play a little bit so she can explain kind of what that philosophy is when we're trying to pick the curriculum materials that we put in front of students. We look for books that really provide a conversation and dialogue. So I'm going to let her explain it. I'm hoping you can hear the...
We need diverse books because we need books in which children can find themselves, see reflections of themselves. I wrote a piece, maybe 1990 it was published, which I called Mirrors, Windows, and Sliding Glass Doors. And I think that's really why we, children need to see themselves reflected. But books can also be windows. And so you can look through and see other worlds and see how they match up or don't match up to your own. But the sliding glass door allows you to enter that world as well. And so that's the reason that the diversity needs to go both ways. And it's not just children who have been underrepresented and marginalized who need these books. It's also the children who always find their mirrors in the books and therefore get an exaggerated sense of their own self-worth and a false sense of what the world is like because it's becoming more and more colorful and diverse as time goes on. So I think that's why.
So how we've gone about that, bringing that philosophy into some of our classrooms, and one of the reasons we adopted the units of study from Teachers College and Columbia University is because they strongly believe in this cultural responsive education. So they reexamined a lot of their curriculum to emphasize this. And their work, I think, kind of was on the forefront a couple of years ago about how they were doing their mentor texts and their read-alouds. So you can see on the screen right here, some of the books that we read that is embedded into our curriculum in our elementary schools that really bring about conversations for students around the diverse worlds. So they're central within the reading and writing workshop. And we do support teachers with these books, and we support them about having the conversations with students around them. That's at an elementary school. And at a middle school, they've been doing a lot of work to do the same thing. As you know, they had the Bridge Home, Panama, I can never say it right, come in to speak as an author. The kids really ate that up. The eighth grade curriculum added a layer of complexity because they started reading The Tell-Tale Heart by Edgar Allan Poe, and they really started bringing in other authors that kind of mirrored his work and explore their backgrounds to affect their voice and style of writing. So we've really opened up, I think, what students are reading. So the one on the, up in the corner, What to the Slave is the Fourth of July, they really studied that in depth and analyzed that speech that was written by Frederick Douglass in eighth grade. And at our high school, I have to say, Mr. Higgins has done a really great job of actually taking out some of the classics around American and British literature and going to more of a thematic system, which allowed more voice in reading. So, which is great because we want kids to have a choice in what they're reading. And he pulled in a lot of books that went around this topic, and every single grade now has a level, I mean, a novel or a play with diversity in mind. And on the screen, you can see some of what they do. Grade nine does Dear Martin. And grade nine and 10 have been exposed to the 13th Great Democracy about mass Black incarceration in America. And from the feedback I've gotten, the students have really enjoyed that, and they've had some very good conversation. Grade 11 does Sula by Toni Morrison. And then grade 12 does Less by Andrew Sean Greer. So we're always growing. I think Dartmouth Public Schools has a great growth mindset. We're always trying to pull in new things. So in light of the current events happening in our world, we kind of did stop and think, what can we do to bring in more? So this actually happened prior to the events, but we all loved it. The Mellow School got a diversity grant where they're going to establish a diversity library for both students and educators. They have plans to have family nights, and they're going to create a portrait wall on the entrance of the building for family pictures and collages. We have, now I'm hoping we can still do this. We don't know what return school would look like, but we do have Adolf Brown booked as our keynote speaker coming in September, where he really talks about implicit bias and what does it look like? And I don't know if anyone has had a chance to hear him speak. We have had a chance, and he is quite, I'm going to play a little soundbite from him, I think.
With summer coming to an end, teachers and staff at Haverhill Horsom School District are gearing up for another school year.
You're in my classroom. Class today was on understanding neuroscience and the neuroscience behind perception, how we see things, what influences what we see. And I started at what we see because that's important before what we teach.
The morning was filled with laughter and fun, but also focusing on how every student deserves a good education.
I am not a Adolf Brown. Don't judge a book by its cover. I came in the way I looked as a student. So that was basically a young man who was grieving, a young man who was not a thug, but a young man who dressed in such a way that he wanted to push people away because all of his prior relationships were letdowns and disappointments.
Dr. Brown shared his own personal story and teaching our staff that we all have backpacks.
I mean, so many of us are carrying so much that we're not in the present because our past is weighing us down.
We all have baggage.
So I should have started with, that was a soundtrack of a school system, kind of doing a retake about Adolf Brown and what he did. But that was a presentation that he'll be doing with our staff in September. And it is a powerful, powerful presentation about not to judge a person when they're walking in and what you see. And he is, story of where he came from in life and where he ended up is a very powerful one. And he thanks educators for it. And he says that's what kind of made him push on to where he would go. He says he lots of times straddled having one foot in advanced ed and one foot in juvenile detention. So he talks about that, and I'm super hopeful we can make that happen in September. If I go back to what else we've done is we've spent a large sum of money increasing diversity texts in our libraries. We have some fabulous library media specialists who have put together a great list of books that can be available for students and staff. We've also, once again, Will Higgins also changed the AP English Language Composition Course for the summertime, where he, all 80 students will be reading the world, Between the World and Me, which is a letter written by a Black journalist to his son. So they'll be reading that and discussing that through that course over the summertime. And we also increased books in our elementary units. An interesting story was one book that we use as Home of the Brave as a mentor text, and we really did find that some of our students struggled wrapping their heads around the theme of the book of refugees and what it was like coming to the country. So we were very happy to be able to get some picture books, which kind of described that situation to our students in a little bit of a fashion of pictures and storytelling so that we plan to pre-read them prior to jumping into Home of the Brave. And then we did, so Blue Sky, White Stars was grade one. We got for, when we celebrate holidays, the name Ja for grade K. And this is a rope for grade three migration unit. Same thing for DMS. They got a couple of more books to add to their literature circles that they're going to be starting this year. Ghost by Jewel Allen Cantz, Refugee, and Quam Alexander's Rebound. I think I messed those names up a little bit. And the last thing that we're doing is at Dartmouth High School, we are having a summer book club, and it's a virtual book study to support staff and admin to have conversations about race, to ensure that every student feels safe and supported, and also to understand staff members' perceptions and feelings. So we've started it, we're in the middle of it, and so far, I think it's been a great experience of reading and learning from our colleagues. So that's the end of my presentation, and I will just stop sharing my screen and open it up to any questions you might have. I think I did that.
Well, you did. Thank you, Mrs. Olivera. First of all, wonderful presentation. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into it. That being said, before I turn it over to my colleagues, I'm going to ask that we just keep it on the questions from Mrs. Olivera around her presentation. I know that all of us have received a number of emails over the past weekend regarding our Native American symbol and how that ties into this agenda topic. But we can absolutely circle back around. I will allow discussion on the tail end of this. But right now, if we could just discuss or ask questions of Mrs. Olivera directly related to her presentation around equality and diversity, I would appreciate it. So we can start with whoever would like to go first. And let me, I can't see everyone at this point. I'll turn, how about I turn it over to Kathleen Amaral?
Thank you, Tracy, for that presentation. That was, you know, quite interesting and exciting, and hopefully, the keynote speaker is something that can happen because that's certainly important for all of our staff. I'm quite interested in that as well, honestly. But this is just so important, and I like how, you know, we highlight that we are a district with a growth mindset. So it's not so much what we're doing wrong or what we're lacking. It's like, how can we improve? How can we get better? And seeing as we are a district of, I don't know if this demographic is correct, but we're 87.7% white. It's really important that we create those opportunities to, for those windows and those sliding glass doors so that people, you know, that's a percentage, and there are people behind that percentage. So of course, there are lots of different people, but ultimately, we are predominantly a white community. And it's really important we step outside of ourselves anytime we can, and it's great to start, you know, with our youngest learners and moving on up and encourage to see the changes that have been made all throughout. So yeah, thank you. Those are my comments for now.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaral. Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Tracy, for putting together that presentation. And, you know, one of the reasons why I wanted to highlight, I asked to put this on the agenda and give the full attention to it is because I know that we are doing a lot. And I know, you know, through conversations with you and Dr. Gifford and Ms. Roy, there's some confusion sometimes when we talk about all students matter and everyone matters because in today's political discourse, that can be a little touchy, right? But I think it's, I think it's important to note that when we say all kids matter, it really means that. And that what we're doing in this curriculum is highlighting so many different cultures and ways of living. And that's what we mean by that. Not that any one group, you know, we're trying to downplay issues of race and racism, but that in our curriculum, we really are providing those windows and those doors into a variety of different cultures. And so I think it's really important, you know, we talk as social science practice, right, about being clear with your definitions, right? And because sometimes we're on the same page, but we're not talking about things in the same way. And so I really want to highlight that, that when we go out and we talk about all kids matter, you know, all cultures matter. It is not to downplay issues of race and racism. It is to highlight that we are literally teaching kids about all of these things. And so I hope that the community sees that through your presentation, how it is woven throughout the entire curriculum. And then to Ms. Amaral's point and your point, right? I think this is great, and I think as we continue to work on this, you know, we always can ask, how can we do better? And I'm excited for us to continue that work once we figure out what fall looks like to start working on those sorts of things.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Anyone else? Mrs. Waite? She's still muted.
You got me?
Yeah, I got you.
All right. No, again, like Tracy, it was fantastic. It's so exciting to see what's happening. And one piece that I thought you, you know, you mentioned I'd love to hear more about is the student ownership of, you know, especially with the civics projects that are going to happen in eighth grade. I think, you know, we've seen, you know, students who are really like, they want to express their voice. They want to feel empowered. And, you know, it's starting, you know, more and more through these discussions in third grade, through the book clubs that are, you know, happening. So I'd love to hear a little bit more about the direction of those projects and, you know, do they include volunteerism, you know, how those will look? And as, you know, again, I know we have a lot to iron out between now and, like you said, the fall and how those will look. But I think the student ownership piece is really important.
Yeah, so I'd love to tell you more about them, but the funny part is that they're wholeheartedly student-led. So as much as I want to not admit this, but being the control person of wanting to put things out, the topic of what students are going to do is student-led. So until we have our eighth grade students and we let them pick what they're going to do and we unpack it for them, we don't really know what it's going to look like. So the teachers have been trained as to what to do with. They went up last year and they found templates and found ways to guide students through it. But we really need our students in front of us to kind of pick the project, which is so exciting. And yet, it's just, you know, they're going to do it. So we're going to, we're going to see how it goes. So we certainly will update you once we, once they, once they tell us what they're doing.
Well, it's all great, Tracy. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Noons? Thank you, Mrs. Waite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just my congratulations, great presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just uh, my, congratulations, a great presentation. Uh, it's obvious there was a lot of thought that was put into this. Uh, it's great to see what we're doing in our system with diversity for all our students and all our grades. I mean, from kindergarten to twelfth. And my hat's off, you know, to the administration and also the teachers that have done the training to uh, to, to make sure that they present these in a, in a correct and proper manner. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. News. Yes, uh, Mrs. Olivera, I will agree with um, all of my colleagues. I think this is really important, uh, that we had the opportunity. And I thank Dr. Jenkins for getting this on the agenda, for, for showcasing and highlighting what uh, the Dartmouth Public Schools is doing uh, for, you know, for our curriculum. I think it's, it's so paramount right now. We're in such a, a tough, tough spot as a nation. And, and I know, and I want to show that all students matter in Dartmouth and what we're doing to, to be extremely inclusive and always looking for ways to, to be better. I, I think that's, I think that's so important. Um, so once again, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I, I have, I have had the opportunity to hear and, and learn about Dr. Adolf Brown. And I think that's a wonderful, if you can, uh, if, if you can get him in, in the fall, um, it sounds like you already have him scheduled. Um, that, that is a wonderful opportunity uh, for the staff and a great uh, growth expense for them, you know, especially around implicit bias. So um, thank you, uh, Mrs. Olivera.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So he is scheduled to come, I just want to say that. And we're, we're toying with, is it a virtual presentation? Can we pull it off in person? But if not, he, we have made arrangements that he can come for twenty-one, September of twenty-one, to do an in-person presentation. So one way or the other, we're going to get him here and that, that's exciting. So. I'm going to leave now, but of course, listen and tell it to you too. Nothing personal.
Uh, well, before you go, I have, Mr. News has his hand raised.
Just a, a quick question. Uh, I mean, all things being considered, if he's able to get in this year, is that something like before school starts or is that a release time day?
No, that was one of our, that we had a plan for our back-to-school PD day that we normally have the second day, that the day before teachers, students come, I'm sorry. Um, we had it planned for that day. Um, so he's still scheduled. We just got to see what phase the state is in and what it will look like. So we've been in contact with him and he's more than happy to work with us or come next year or do it virtually. So we have lots of options, which makes me happy.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So that being said, uh, one of the things that uh, I'll address is that a number of the, are all the committee members have received a number of emails over the past weekend regarding uh, the Dartmouth Indians and the use of the Native American symbol, um, and asking us to please consider revisiting and changing it. And they, uh, they asked to basically be addressed during uh, this agenda item. That being said, um, I'll, I'll allow my committee members to share their thoughts on this. Per, I, I will actually like to, to start off with this. Um, this was originally presented in the fall, this past fall. Um, at that time, uh, the, the committee decided not to take any um, decision on it, one way or the other. Uh, however, you know, my responsibility as a school committee member in Dartmouth, just like my colleagues, is to, you know, to obviously look out after the best interest of, of the students in this town, um, but also represent our constituents uh, throughout the town. Um, I think that's important, that we, we listen, uh, we, we allow everyone to have a voice at the table. And you know, we share their voice uh, through public meetings. And um, that, that being said, you know, I, I, I'm really torn about this issue. I know one of the things right now is that, one second, Dr. Jenkins. But one of the issues right now is while I can appreciate, um, you know, everyone's passion around uh, this issue and for every person that has um, concerns around the Dartmouth Indian, there's someone else that I've spoken to that is um, completely, uh, they look at it as a source of respect and pride and in no way derogatory. However, at the end of the day, right now, I see this committee's uh, number one priority moving forward as how are we going to educate our students in the fall and reopen schools? I'm not, I'm not opposed to revisiting this issue and, and you know, and, and rolling it into maybe our Equality and Diversity Committee uh, when school reopens, because that's something that's a, I, I need to see happen. I want to see happen. Um, but I, I have serious, serious concerns and I need to, my personal opinion is that I think we need to allow the Dartmouth Public Schools Administration to focus right now on how are we going to open school? The, the, the number of hours in the time that it takes to, to put out these three different plans that the Commissioner Riley is asking for. In addition to, I have, and I'm sure some of my other committee members have serious concerns about what the FY twenty-two budget is going to look like. Um, there is, I had a, I, I reached out to Dr. Gifford and our, our athletic director, Mr. Kylie, earlier today about just in the event that we were to look at rebranding ourselves, the financial implementation, amplifications of that is, it's in the tens, if not hu- over a hundred thousand dollars, um, to look at rebranding ourselves. That's not to say that, that's not a reason not to do it. However, right now, I think our, our committee's focus should be on how are we going to get our schools open? And I agree, let's, let's put this on the table and revisit it in the fall. I'll open it, uh, once school opens. Uh, Dr. Jenkins?
I think I've also made my position clear on this. I am not a fan of the mascot. I do not believe that money is a consideration. We can always make a vote. And if we don't have the money, delay the change. I think what this moment in time is telling us is that it is not enough to be non-racist. We must be anti-racist. And anti-racist means doing the hard work of opposing problematic issues in your own home and in your own community, right? This is tough. I get it. We've heard from a lot of people. But that's what being anti-racist means. It means putting in and doing the hard work. We have been the Indians for a while, right? That is not a reason to keep it, right? I will sleep soundly at night knowing where, why I voted on this. And I may lose my office for this. I have decided I do not care, right? I have heard from members of the tribe that they are opposed to this. Even if some are, are in support of this, I have heard from some that are opposed. And to me, the fact that this is painful to them means that I want to put in this work. I am fine with putting this off. I don't think we should make this decision tonight because I don't think this was clearly communicated on the agenda that we are going to be speaking about this. But we need to put in the work on this and at least make the gesture of changing that name, right? Um, it may take a while for us to rebrand us because it costs money, but we need to put in the work to do the right thing here. And that's my position.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Uh, I can't see everyone again. Uh, Mrs. Wade?
Yes. Um, I have to say that I completely agree with Dr. Jenkins. You know, this is, you know, I came into this office unopposed. I'm aware of that. No one had really asked me where I stood on this issue. But you know, when I went to that meeting in the fall, I was pretty surprised that there wasn't a conversation that was going to be held, that this conversation was shut down. I know where we are. You know, again, I agree, a priority is getting our kids back in school. Um, but you know, we just listened to Tracy go over this rich curriculum, which is designed to be inclusive. And we also have this eighth grade project, which I, again, I noted that, you know, it's empower students to make change. And I had at least five students reach out to me who are current students who said, you know, I don't want to wear the mascot. I feel humiliated. And I, and to me, and my own children feel that way, which is, it's, it's tough. Like, and I, because I even said to my son, and I hate to bring him into this, but you know, he's young. And I said, well, what do you think about this changing? And he said, you know, it has to be done. It's wrong. Like, and, and again, they went through the DeMello system where they were told, you can't say Indian style. We don't use that terminology anymore. Um, you know, we don't use the word Indian. We correct them. We use the word Native American. I know there's a lot of change around that name. It's not just the name, but I think there's a complexity. And I did like, you know, we all had people from, who reached out to us on both sides. And I actually thought there were a lot of compelling pieces that were, um, of information that was shared to me by people who wanted to keep the symbol and they're very concerned about the history. And that we don't want to forget that there were peoples who were here who were, had a rich culture. But I'm not sure that handing someone a T-shirt with a symbol of the name Indian and a mascot really informs them about the diverse nature of those cultures. So I think we, I, you know, I agree with Dr. Jenkins. Our priority, and, and I also agree with Chris. Our priority is to get the kids back in school. This is a stressful time for so many families. We need to do that. But we also need to make sure that we don't forget that this is a very important opportunity. We want to be, you know, so many schools are in the same position. They're looking at this in, in Barnstable and Braintree. I think we need to be, you know, we don't want to be the people who dragged our feet on this issue, especially when we're talking about, you know, we're embracing inclusivity. Like, you know, we need to really make a statement. That's, that's how I feel about it. So. That's it.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Wade. Uh, Mrs. Amaral?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I think, I think number one, we've got to get our kids back to school. We've got to, we've got to uh, figure out a plan that works for families. There's a lot of people um, sort of in the lurch and teachers and administration trying to figure this out. A lot, a lot that we have to tackle. However, um, I, I do think we should add this and other things to our um, Equity and Diversity Committee, you know. It, it, I don't feel like you can talk about one without the other. And it does deserve eh, um, consideration in that dialogue in that way. And what may come of it. I mean, the reality is though, too, no matter how you feel about it, like you said, Chris, we're hearing from people. We're hearing from a lot of people who are in support. Um, we had that public hearing in the fall and then, you know, nothing came of that. Um, something needs to come of that, one way or the other. Uh, because you can't talk about anti-racism and not discuss the reasons behind why people are in support or not in support of, of that logo. Um, with that said, you know, the, the reality is too, we might be pushed to change this sooner than later. Uh, the sixteenth of, of March, the legislation actually passed this through to the Joint Committee, um, uh, the Ways and Means Committee. And so whether we like it or not, whether we're for it or against it, whether we want it to change or not, the reality is they have until December to actually make this a law. And so COVID has, has made a lot of um, impact in, in the legislative, you know, timelines and such. And this is one thing that we may be pushed. So at a minimum, I, I think we should include this in our, our conversations around that committee to, to do better. I also think, you know, we need to think more globally around disability with that as well. And so I have some ideas to bring to the table for that. But um, I certainly would support us uh, bringing this up in that format, Chris.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaral. Mr. News? Do you have any thoughts for?
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I appreciate everybody's comments. I think uh, everybody knows where I stand and I've always stood on this, so that's not going to change. But uh, you know, it's funny, before the meeting started, I wrote a couple of notes down on a pad uh, just so I wouldn't forget about them in case this did pop up. And uh, one of them, you know, following up on yours, uh, Chris, is, yeah, we've got to, first and foremost, we've got to think about what we're doing, you know, come August twenty-seventh with the school opening and what we're going to be doing. Where are the kids going? How are we getting them there? What are the classes going to look like and everything type of deal? And the other thing that I had written down and I had thought about this, you know, when this all started uh, over the weekend was, as your comment, what's the cost of doing everything? And what, you know, where does that money come from in the budget that we don't have? You know, and we're not going to have in the next couple of years, the way this pandemic is panning out in, in the moment. So, I mean, everybody knows where I stand. I'm not changing my vote. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. And uh, I mean, I'm happy being an Indian. I've always been an Indian and will continue to be an Indian. We do it respectfully. We do it with pride. You know, we don't uh, talk in a negative or derogatory way about them. And uh, we act very kind to them. So, you know, leave it, uh, leave it the way it is. It is my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. News. Thank you uh, to all my colleagues on the committee. Um, you know, with all that being said, um, like I said earlier, uh, once we figure out how we're going to get school open and get our students educated, I think that globally, not just around the Dartmouth Indian, but around equality and diversity, we need to get a committee off the ground in Dartmouth. I think that's extremely important. I would like to see, and I'll, I'll be happy to, you know, take some comments from my colleagues. I would love to either see the Dartmouth Indian be rolled into that committee and how we move forward with it. Ultimately, this is just my, my opinion on it. Um, take it for what it's worth. I, I would like to see some kind of formal presentation made from a committee, um, whether it's this committee or if we have another one, uh, made up of all stakeholders, students, parents, faculty, school committee members, presented to the school committee. And then a formal vote be taken in the fall, um, after school is, is reopened, um, come say October, November, to make, get votes on the record as to how are we going to move forward? Uh, are we going to rebrand ourselves? Are, are, are we going to stay the Dartmouth Indians? Um, that's, that's just my thoughts. Um, it, I don't know if anyone has their opinions on whether or not it's a good idea or a bad idea. Um, I, I just think, as, as the chair of the committee and as a, just a committee member like all of you, I would, I would love to be able to be presented with every, everything around this topic because I am, I could go either way on this. I'll be quite honest with you. Um, so I think uh, Dr. Jenkins had her hand raised first, so we'll go with uh, you, Shannon.
Uh, yeah, I've talked, been talking a little bit to uh, my colleague, LaSala Hall, who was at our, um, uh, our meeting last time, who talked about this, who's the uh, Chair of the NAACP of New Bedford. Um, he's been in communication with some local tribal leaders about this. Um, he's also a Dartmouth resident and he has indicated that he would be willing to um, help us do some of this work. So I am at ask that, um, you know, he'd be included because I think he's a, a great resource and he has volunteered um, to offer his time. Um, I'd be happy to pass his contact information along, um, but he has told me that he is willing to help out on this.
Great. Thank, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Uh, Mrs. Wade?
Yes, I just wanted to say that, Chris, I agree completely. I mean, that was why, in the fall, I was just hoping for more of a discussion and just to hear. And then I've, you know, I've looked into it and I researched and, you know. But you know, to your point, I think we need to hear from all the stakeholders, that, you know, parents, you know, alumni, and, and have that presentation. Plus, you know, if there is a removal of the name, what are we going to do to really, you know, and present that history in a different way so that, you know, we can, you know, celebrate the people who lived here? If that, if that's our choice, if, if we're deciding or are put in the position of deciding that we want to abandon this name, um, how do we highlight, make sure that those, um, that history is remembered? So I, I agree, Chris. I think that that's, you know, an, an important and a good way to approach it.
Thank you, Mrs. Wade. Mrs. Amaral?
Yeah, I, uh, just to, to reiterate, my, my support of this as well is, uh, you know, to, you know, to be clear, last year, nothing came of it. But you know, I was chair at the time, uh, and we did make a few efforts. Uh, Dr. Jenkins actually passed along some names where we didn't vote on anything and, 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 uh, to, to have a, a big committee last fall, um, but we, we did reach out. I mean, I, I, I think two or three times to a few different people. And I don't feel like they, maybe they didn't feel that we were serious about it. Um, but I think rolling it into a committee where it's a broader conversation, where this is an important part of it, that it will get done. There will be some follow-through. There'll be people tasked. So I think that she, Dr. Jenkins, um, my opinion is, is to welcome the voice of, you know, her colleague from the NAACP, to help us move this along as well for this topic, as well as the other pieces of the puzzle that we're going to be tackling within that committee.
That's right. Thank you, Mrs. Amaral. Jenkins?
Sorry, something flashed up here. Um, so I, I reached out to some uh, tribal members and I've also heard through my colleague, LaSala Hall. Um, but yeah, I don't think some of the tribal leaders were willing to work with us or communicate with us because we had voted to not hear their opinion, right? Um, and it's, you know, when you say, hey, we don't want to hear your- Um, and it's, you know, when you say, hey, we don't want to hear your opinion, and then you reach out and say, so what's your opinion? Um, it's not surprising sometimes when people say, I'm not, it doesn't seem like you're interested in working with me. Um, so I'm hopeful that if the committee is willing to say, yes, we are doing this work, um, that, that tribal response, you know, tribal representatives, leaders, people from these tribes will be more willing to sit down with us because then it shows that we are serious about doing this work as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Uh, that, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, uh, just thinking as, as everyone's been speaking, uh, I just become a little bit concerned with, uh, the time, timeframe that you've talked about, Chris. And the only thing that concerns me is the fact that we don't, we're not sure what's happening with school as this moves forward. And I don't want to see us boxed into, you know, September, October, November, and, you know, everything's hitting the fan and we're not able to do that. And all of a sudden, everybody comes back and says, well, see, you people are dragging your foot, feet and you don't want to do it because you said you'd have it done by October and here it is November 1st, et cetera, if you understand what I'm saying. I just want to make sure that we don't box ourselves into a timeframe.
Sure.
And, and not being able to because of not being able to meet COVID-19, et cetera, et cetera.
Nope, I, I thank you, uh, for, for those comments and thinking about that, Mr. Nunes. Uh, that, that being said, wh- why don't we do this? Why don't we think about, and I would like to see this, um, on the, our next little committee agenda, why don't we, uh, if you could, Kate or Dr. Gifford, add an agenda item around of, and, and no one really answered me whether or not this should be a separate committee or rolled into the Equality Diversity Committee that we're already looking in at forming. Um, are we okay with just one committee, uh, exploring all of this? Because I think some of these same stakeholders, uh, would be valuable, uh, with both the, the broader picture addition to, uh, the Dartmouth Indian.
I second that. Yeah.
Okay. So why don't, why don't we have formation of, um, Equality Diversity Committee on the next agenda? I, and let's be thinking about who do we want, uh, as far as stakeholders go? Off the top of my head, I, I think two school committee members, uh, two, uh, school department representatives, um, some community members, um, but, but let's, um, at the next meeting, let's take a formal vote as to who we're going to put on this commi, on this committee to, um, uh, really explore not only the Dartmouth Indian, but also, you know, how the Dartmouth schools can do better. Because let's face it, we can all do better, um, with, with this. Um, is everyone, is everyone okay with that? Um, any?
Nope. No, I'm fine with that. I'm good with that.
Okay. So, yeah, I won't, this way we won't tie ourselves right now to any timeline, but let's get it formally on next, uh, the next meeting's agenda. Let's create a committee and then at that point, we can, um, you know, get the ball rolling and decide, um, you know, who's going to be on it and how to proceed. And then ultimately, at some point, depending on what school looks like in the fall and, and I don't know, I have my own concerns about that, of what school's going to look like in the fall. Uh, but, um, you know, let's not tie, tie ourselves to any timeline, but let's just be committed to exploring this process and, and following it through and ultimately, um, taking a vote on this. So I thank everyone for their thoughtful, uh, their thoughtful words and their statements around this topic. Once again, thank you to, uh, Mrs. Olivera. Uh, next up, under Old Business Superintendent's update on matters related to or affected by COVID-19. Dr. Gifford?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So as you know, I don't want to rehash things you do know, but, uh, we are in the process right now of developing the three required plans for return to school um, to be submitted on July 31st. We've met with teams of teachers and admin throughout the district just to get initial thoughts, et cetera. Um, right now, we have a small group just drafting. We're trying to wrap our head around what kind of, what this looks like even on paper, just the appropriate things to include in the plan, et cetera. So we're drafting that, including the, um, return to school, full return to school with restrictions, of course, safety restrictions, which the buildings have worked on for us and they're each built, in each building, taking into consideration the feasibility study, uh, spacing that we would have to do, the desks, et cetera. Um, as you might require, you know, we're looking at either three foot to the six foot. We're trying to take into consideration all thinking and, um, to use many non-traditional spaces such as the auditorium, maybe the cafeteria, uh, closets, to put kids and teachers in as we split kids up, um, and teaching staff. There's also a lot of other repercussions about that, especially at the high school level, where trying to brace up, break up the courses and the qualified staff, this, uh, appropriately licensed staff to teach those various classes. So there are a lot of things to think about in any kind of return to school plan. Um, we're also investigating a hybrid plan, which a couple of comments, you know, a couple of suggestions were, which we actually put on our survey, week on, week off, alternate day, et cetera. So we're just brainstorming how that would look. Um, so of course, that would be like half the students coming in on one time at one week or one day and then half, uh, working at home and vice versa. So we would break students into cohort groups. Of course, with that, we have to, um, consider special education placements and, um, transportation as well. The third one, as you know, is the Remote Learning Plan. Right now, we have individual, we met with, um, teachers who wanted, who volunteered to be on what we're calling the Remote Learning Task Force, and they're working very hard with their level. So we have an elementary team, a middle school team and a high school team on tweaking and enhancing our existing remote learning plan with more robustness, if that's a word, um, schedules, grading, um, that kind of, those kinds of things that we really need to step up our game if we were to go completely remote. So we're working on that. We're putting together a draft plan. Um, we also have set bargaining dates, so, because anything we decide, we obvi, obviously have to bargain and negotiate with the union. So we're meeting with them this Thursday. Um, I wanted, I think, I sent you an email that if Mr. Nunes would be willing to sit on that, if the committee has no problem with that, you can talk about that as he did on the other teams. Um, so that's where we are with the, the, uh, plans being developed. What I'm thinking is if we, I really have to clarify from the Commissioner, which someone asked at our last Commissioner's meeting, but I don't, I'm not quite sure we got the complete answer. If we do not come to agreement with the union, as you know, this is a very, very short window of time to get this done. Um, and come August 10th, when we have to submit what we call our final drafts, if you will, or final plans, and make a decision as to what plan we're going to implement, do we still implement it? If there's still no agreement? So I have to look into that a little bit more and get more direction. But what I was thinking was on our next meeting, which I believe is August 3rd, we can, um, have more, um, detailed about what that hybrid plan is looking like and some of the highlights from the Remote Learning Plan as well. So we have more of a, um, formal kind of presentation because we do need school committee support for whatever plan we think we would implement come the middle of August. So we'll bring that forth again. Um,
Excuse me, Dr. Gifford, could I stop you right there? So if you had said by the middle of August that we'd need to get school committee, that you would need to get school committee approval on, Kate, do you know or have any idea for our parents uh, that are maybe watching or may watch this? Um, when are parents, when are we going to have a final decision? Like, when are parents going to know? Because I know, oh, I, I, I've gotten that question a lot as far as, when, when are we going to know what the fall is going to look like? And it's, and I think I know the answer to this, but if you could just share it with, with us.
Sure. Yeah, we, we are not going to know until, like I said, about that second week in August and that's, uh, recommended by, um, Desi. We just don't know what's going to happen with the virus itself. So I think we'll have a better sense, what we can. I'm hoping you can hear me. I just got a connection unstable, but hoping everybody could hear me.
We lost you for a few seconds there, but you're back.
I'm back. Okay, good. What we can say is, I would imagine, um, by the end of July, I think we'll be able to at least share with parents, if we were to come back hybrid, what that would look like. So I think people will have a better sense. Okay, they're doing, if they do hybrid, my child might go every other day or every other week or whatever it is. So we'll be able to do that in a couple of weeks. Um, we also, uh, if you recall, we sent a survey out. I just wanted to quickly go over a couple of those responses and we'll, we'll be putting that back on our Facebook page. We, we wanted to, um, put it up with a little bit more explanation than just the graphic because I think it caused a little bit of confusion. So we took it down and we're going to, uh, explain that a little bit better and put that up. So just overall, we had 2,400, 2,477 responses from parents, um, split between secondary and elementary level pretty evenly. And if folks were told, if safety measures were in place, would you want to return in fall? And 60% said yes, in-person learning, 30% hybrid and 10% remote. And again, parents didn't have much information at this time. We're hoping they'll, you know, we'll have more for them coming up. The top two choices of what a hybrid would look like, very evenly split, was the week on, week off and the alternate days. Um, if, if it was in person, full in person, 74% of people said they would come, that they're looking to come, 21% maybe and 4% no. I mean, those are a little bit rounded. Of course, we still don't have the transportation guidance that's supposed to be coming this week. Um, and busing, people said that 46% said they would ride the bus, 32% no, and 22% undecided. We also, uh, researched a little bit about internet access. So about 89% said they had good internet access because we're looking again to, will we have enough devices, which we would? We would have enough to give everybody that needs one a device, should we have to go remote. And, um, only 4%, 0.4% said they didn't have it. So again, in Dartmouth, we're very fortunate with that. Staff survey, 358 staff members answered and it was 63% were teachers. And, uh, of that number, extremely confident of returning to school was 50%. So we have a lot of work to do on that. You might have seen on Friday night, we received, um, guidance of Desi, seems to be putting things out on Friday nights now, uh, protocols for responding to COVID scenarios. And it's about a 20-page document. So we need time to sift through that. It's the, what if a child tests positive? What if a child has a temperature? What if a staff member gets it? What do you do with the class? What do you, all of those things. So there's a, an extensive guidance document that's been sent to us that includes about self-containment and et cetera, et cetera. So we'll be sifting through that, um, as we make on more decisions. And again, hoping, really hoping that the, the transportation guidance comes, if not tomorrow, very, very soon. Because no matter what we determine it, we're hoping that it's better than the initial thought of transportation, that we can really get our kids to school. So, um, that's kind of it on the work we're doing around COVID right now. And if you ask me, we still say we don't know. We don't know.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford, for, for that update around, uh, the COVID-19, um, situation that's going on globally and then also how we're dealing with it locally. Um, I want to thank you and your team, being an administrator in other districts. I know the time and effort that's going into creating these plans and the amount of stakeholders and staff and people that are involved in these volunteer groups and just not knowing and as the information changes every day, it's, you know, ultimately, I, I, I want to assure the parents in town that safety, you know, the health and safety of students in town is first and foremost, as well as our staff, our teaching staff and our faculty. Um, you know, that's, that's, that's also extremely important. And we want to make sure that if we're going to reopen, um, in some way, shape or form for in-person instruction, we're going to do it safely and we're going to, um, make sure that everyone has had a chance to share their opinions, um, and their voices. But also, we, we got to look at what the state is, um, sharing with us and the guidance that they're giving us, uh, to help make these decisions. Uh, so thank you, Dr. Gifford. Any of my colleagues have any, uh, comments? Dr. Jenkins?
So, um, you know, I've run into a couple of people and I think I, I shared this with Dr. Gifford, who said, "We're going back to school face-to-face in the fall." And I said, "What?" Then I missed, like, I checked my email and they're like, "No, it was in Dr. Gifford's letter." I just want to remind people about close reading skills, right? That, um, I think, and maybe it's potentially like optimism and projection, like we all want our kids out of the house and back in school. Um, but I think it's important to set expectations that, um, we don't know what school is going to look like in the fall. Um, and I'll be honest, my personal opinion, knowing all of this stuff, is I just don't really see how we can be, um, we're dealing with the same challenges on campus. I don't see how we can be fully face-to-face, um, you know, five days a week. I want, that's my personal opinion, um, but I want to put it out there because I, people have really strong opinions on this. I get that, um, and I, I don't want to set people up for, um, for disappointment, um, in the fall. Um, we have, I know on our campus, and I'm sure this is true in the schools, we have a lot of people who are at high risk for COVID in, in our workforce, right? And so we have to figure out how to address that. We have students who are high-risk, students who have family members who are high-risk. Um, so thinking that we're all going to be able to be there all the time, I, to me seems very, um, uh, pie in the sky. Um, and I, I just want to put that out there so people aren't hearing, oh, yeah, that fully face-to-face plan, and they don't listen or read anything that comes after it. Um, you know, I'm just really hopeful, given how numbers are going in other parts of the country, that we do manage to do some face-to-face. Um, and so I will take that opportunity to remind everyone to continue to wear their masks, right? Because we need to be vigilant about the things that we do, um, that are not essential, um, so that the things that are really important, right, like schools, um, have the space to be able to do that. So we all have to continue to be vigilant so we can send our kids back to school safely.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Agreed. Uh, Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you to either, uh, Dr. Gifford or, uh, Mr. Kylie or Ms. Roy. I mean, Dr. Gifford was talking about the fact of, uh, you know, staff being split and classrooms being split. I mean, uh, is there a potential that, for argumentative sake, at the last minute, we have to go looking for additional staff, depending what we're going to be doing? And, you know, do we have the money in the budget or what are we looking at?
Yep. Um, at this point, the only, we, we feel, and if you're talking like an in, the full in-person, which I have to agree with Dr. Jenkins, the probability of that seems, unless something drastic happens with the virus or whatever, it seems pretty, um, not probable. For a full, traditional, regular, here we are, we're back to school. If we were to do a hybrid method, um, we believe at this point, and just looking at what a schedule might be, that we would have appropriate staff. Um, so we wouldn't see that. If we were to do in-person, trying to split the schools up in different rooms, et cetera, that would be a problem with staffing. So that's one of the reasons, it's really not, um, really not, we're not seeing that as a, a, an option that really would work for us, just for what you just said, Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. And Mrs. Emerald?
Um, just a couple of comments. Uh, you may have seen, because it's, this happened on social media, uh, folks were asking if the infographic, um, was, uh, including the special education survey results. I'm assuming it probably did, but I don't know if that's true.
No, no. Um, actually, I was asking, um, Ms. Townsend, she would be bringing a presentation on that, um, next meeting.
Oh, fantastic.
Yep.
Fantastic. Because the other, uh, the other big piece that, you know, is being talked about in the special education community, um, about students who already receive special education are those who may come back to school with additional needs. I, so you have kids coming back and we don't know how this has impacted them. Uh, we know that you have kids coming back and we don't know how this has impacted them. We know that the, you know, the abuse, the numbers are really down of, of folks kind of reporting abuse. And so that's very concerning. But just the impact of, you know, a broken down, the schedule not being what it once was, or the worry and the concern in students coming in with an extreme level of social emotional needs or learning differences compared to where they were prior to March. So that's a whole other element on top of how do we get back to school? Then it's like, well, what do our students look like? And, and, and really taking inventory of what their needs are now versus pre-COVID. So there's a lot, there's a lot. And I really commend you and the administration and, and teachers for, for sharing how they feel about going back and also just planning for what's to come, whatever that looks like.
Thank you, Mrs. Ammaral. Mrs. Wade?
Yes, I also want to, you know, tag on to that and say, you know, it's a tremendous amount of work. It's overwhelming. It's, you know, completely, you know, constantly a moving target. So it's, it's impressive when, you know, what you've been able to do and, and assimilate all this information. One question people have asked me, parents have asked me, do you anticipate that if there is a hybrid or full back-to-school model adopted, that there still will be an option for those folks who don't feel comfortable, can't medically go back to school to access a virtual academy of some sort? Is that what you're thinking is?
Yeah, great question. We're looking, we're hoping the state, they're looking right now into a learning management system, which is, would be a remote learning platform for students that, like you said, are, just cannot come back to school or choose not to, for whatever reason it is. So that's another piece. That's another piece to the pie of how do we then keep those kids engaged in education? So yes, that will be.
And that would not be homeschooling. It would still be our students then.
Correct, correct, correct. We still will have a responsibility to those kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Ammaral?
I, I don't, I don't know if we spoke to this. I apologize if you spoke to this in the past. But could we, could you speak, Dr. Gifford, to, you know, you hear a lot of families saying they want it, they're opting to homeschool, homeschool. My understanding of that is that, not to recommend folks kind of jump to that at that point in time. If, 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 if a family is not already sort of prepared and in that mindset of homeschooling, this is not the time to start. And am I correct in saying that if they did opt that and write a letter of that plan for their future, that would be, that would mean less, less of this tiny bit of funding that we're looking forward to, to kind of disperse through what we can offer? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And you, you're right. I wouldn't recommend if people, and of course, they call Ms. Roy's office if they're looking to do their own homeschooling. And I'm sure we wouldn't recommend it by give a, give it a shot with the learning management system. My thinking is, and we've discussed it with our team, is especially if we have teachers or staff members that can't come back as well, to, kind of like we did the FLIP program at the high school perhaps, where we had a supervisor that monitored those students on, like an edgenuity and other platform, but to keep in touch, to keep connected, to keep them moving. I mean, we don't want to just put people on a remote learning plan and forget about them either. So, yeah, there's a lot to think about with that.
Anything else from any of my colleagues? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Dr. Gifford, for updating us on that. Next up under Old Business is the MASC Resolution Anti-Racism. And I know that we had an agenda at the last meeting and then we asked for this presentation on our curriculum and what the Don Public Schools is doing. You know, that being said, I've had, I've had some time to think about this. And I'm just wondering if, it's the committee's pleasure, whether or not we vote this as-is, or I would maybe like to see us send this to the Policy Subcommittee and let's adopt this for Dartmouth as far as how it specifically fits our own resolution and how, you know, we, we feel on this as a, as a committee and as a school department. So I'm not sure what the committee's pleasure is on this, if we want to take a vote as-is or if anyone feels that we could send this to the Policy Subcommittee for how it fits into Dartmouth's perspective. Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you and I had a discussion on this two weeks ago and I also had a talk with Dr. Gifford about this. But the way this policy is, or this resolution, I apologize, this resolution is written, there's no way I can support it. I mean, I look at, you know, what they want us to do and what we're quote-unquote, you know, saying, just, I think flies, in some instances, flies in the face of everything that we do do or that we, we as a district want to do. And I think there's some underlying issues if we try to do what they're looking for, for this resolution to say. So, you know, hold this, you know, can we fix some of this in the policy? Maybe. But as this resolution stands right now, there's no way I'm going to vote for it. I'll be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
And I'll gladly, I'll gladly give you the, the ones that I have problems with if anybody's interested.
Any other committee members, their thoughts on this?
Well, I'm in support of doing what you say, Chris, and reporting it down to the Policy Subcommittee. But I'm, you know, I think in all fairness, you know, we should hear and have a dialogue. If, you know, Mr. Nunes is uncomfortable with certain, you know, portions of it, you know, we're, we're weighing in and as a committee, it seems that we, something we should talk about, you know, maybe we take it step by step.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Wade. Dr. Jenkins, could you have your hand raised?
Yeah, you know, I personally have no problems with anything as, as how it's written, but I do think it is committing the district to certain steps. And so I do think we need the input of the administration. So I would personally vote for it in its present form, but I do think the administration needs to review it and provide input on what we're doing in each of those areas and what, what things might be, might be difficult, if there are any. So that's, I guess, fine with me.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. That being said, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up? I keep going back from speaker view to gallery view and I'm missing pictures. Did you have your hand up, Mrs. Ammaral?
No, I, I mean, I completely agree with what Dr. Jenkins just said. I mean, I, I support it as it's written, but I do think it, it does, you know, lend itself potentially, especially with Mr. Nunes's, Mr. Nunes bringing up some concerns or just apprehension that this go through. You know, I, I think through the Policy Committee, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, no, they're not concerns, they're not apprehensions, they're concerns. So everyone is aware.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. That being said, I'd like to send this down to the Policy Subcommittee to have an opportunity to have some open dialogue with the administration. I'm not sure if we have an opportunity to, for the Policy Subcommittee to meet before our next meeting, to send it back to us. But I would, I would ask that this be sent down to the Policy Subcommittee for, for review with them and the administration and for them to provide feedback to the full committee at a later date.
You need a motion on that, Mr. Chair, if so, I'll move that.
Sure, I'll, I'll take a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Mr. Nunes on the motion. Any discussion? Chair, here, Nun, roll call. Ms. Gunther?
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Mary Wade?
Yes.
Kathleen Ammaral?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gunther. Next up under Old Business is Town Charter Review Appointment. So as you remember, I had brought this to the full committee after receiving an email from our town administrator, town administrator, Mr. McGinnis. And I did hear back from him after our last meeting. I had asked him about whether or not it had to be school committee members. And it does not need to be school committee members. It just needs, they need to be, obviously live in town. So it could be any one of us, if any one of us is interested on being on the charter review committee, or we could appoint someone to the charter review committee. I'll just remind everyone that, like he, like Mr. McGinnis had said, that it is a time commitment that sounds like right around a year from the time that it starts in the fall to the following, I think, fall town meeting. So does, right now, is anyone interested in being on the charter review committee? So that being, that being said, I, I do have someone in mind. I'm not sure what the committee will think about it. And I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to her yet. But I was just thinking about retired Principal Brooks from Potter School on whether or not, I know that she has a, obviously a vested interest in this town, being a principal for all these years for the Don Public Schools, as well as a town meeting member and a town resident. So if the committee is okay with that, I would be more than happy to reach out to Mrs. Brooks to she, to see if she was willing to accept our appointment to the charter review committee.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I'm good with that as well. I mean, I was thinking that we, I think Mr. Nunes said that last time, we had a school committee member and a member of the administration. But I was sitting here trying to think through an administration who lived in, in town. But a former member of the administration, you know, is, is administrative team is good. Because I do think there are a lot of technical things at the way things work that we want to be careful if we're talking about changing the charter, that if someone knows how that works, we need to have that sort of person at the table. So I think that's a good idea to, to propose, to have her do that. Yes.
Perfect. So that'll be one of our appointments, if she's willing to accept it. Does anyone else have any suggestions? Dr. Jenkins?
I'm going to say, I can't, I have accepted a new role at my university, so I'm, I can't, I don't have the time and the space in this new role to do this. I don't know if anyone else on the committee would be able to do it. I don't think we have to go to every single meeting. But I do think, you know, lots of times the charter review, I know my husband was on it last time, there's talks about sort of profound shifts to the structure of power in town government. And so I think it's important that, that I, if one of us could just be there at least sometime to be able to sort of, I don't want to say guard our turf, but, you know, a little bit, right? Make sure that the changes that are made don't have a negative effect on the school committee and the schools.
No, that's, that's really an excellent point. And I just, I wish I could commit, but I, I just can't. But I see Mrs. Wade with her hand raised.
Well, so here's, I mean, I, what I will say is, my concern is that I'm so new. I have the trainings that are going on. So I just want to make sure that as I, I'm, you know, going through all the right protocols, I'm happy to, I will do it, you know, and I'm happy to help. But again, I, I, you know, I am a newbie. So, you know, take it for what it's worth. You know, I, I have a lot of on-the-job trainings in front of me. So, you know, with all the, the trainings that are happening in the next two weeks, hopefully I'll get on the page a little bit more. But, you know, I'm willing to take that one, I guess, is what I'm saying. But just give me a little license here as, you know.
We'll, we'll cut you a little slack, is what you're asking for.
Yes, please.
We'll cut you a lot of slack if you volunteer to do that.
All right.
None of us are dying to do it.
Beth's across the room thinking, "Oh, God."
Well, thank you very much, Mary. I, I speak for the committee when I say I, we appreciate that.
Okay.
And yeah, no, absolutely, we'll, we'll cut you a lot of slack.
Thank you. Thank you. Already have, and I appreciate it.
I, I don't think we need a motion on this. Do we need a motion?
Okay.
Just because, okay, just because I, I, I need to reach out to Mrs. Brooks first and I'll, hopefully she'll accept with delight. And I think, and I honestly think that she's a, a good resource, being a member of the school community for so many years and knowing what goes on in the school department. So thank you, everyone, for that. Under New Business, Superintendent's Update, Dr. Gifford.
Okay, we have a couple of things other than COVID. Just want to let you know that the Chair of the Finance Committee has reached out to us, looking to meet with some members of the Budget Subcommittee upcoming dates. We let her know that probably more towards August, and we'll come up with some dates. And hopefully we'll have some more information from the state on the budget at that time. Some of us, the central office and number of the principals attended the virtual conference for the Mass Executive Institute last week. And I'm not sure if any of you did get to attend any of the keynote speakers, but it was, it actually came out much better than I thought it was going to be. And folks did a really nice job putting that together. We just received word yesterday or today that we received a $12,000 summer vacation learning program grant. We submitted an application for, to, to offer a four-day camp in February and April for like STEM-related enrichment activities. So we did receive that grant and we would, you know, be looking for teachers in the future to get that program ready. And I think you might have heard that the MIAA has, you know, tentatively set a September 14th date for sports. Again, who knows? And I don't know what it looks like, but that's all I know, is that they, they're trying, they have a task force that continues to work. We also, in, and I'm not sure if it will take, I don't know what the weather is tomorrow, but we were supposed to start, we were supposed to start a strength and conditioning session for our kids with some of our coaches and supervisors this week at, at the field, at the stadium. Three sessions of students, obviously a, the right number of students socially distanced, et cetera, just to start some strength and conditioning. But it was canceled for today because of the heat. So I'm not sure, you know, whether it will be going. I don't know what the weather is tomorrow. But that's in the works and we're looking to get the kids out, at least enjoying some of that. As I said, Ms. Townsend will be at the school committee meeting next week to kind of talk about the special ed survey results. And we've also applied for what we call a remote learning grant. It's a tech grant. Mr. Oliver, you might know about that one. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if we'll have a chance. It is one based on need, but we had to put forth some of the data that we have about our families who have internet, who have devices, et cetera. So we put in for a grant. We'll see what happens. And that's about it for new things.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Yes, I had heard about the tech grant and it's wonderful to, you know, any, any little bit helps, right? So thank you for all of that. That's exciting that at least they're working on a tentative sports date. Whether or not that'll come to fruition, who knows? But I, I appreciate the fact that they're working towards that. For, under New Business, under Report of the Chair, a couple of things. One thing, do we have our, our meeting scheduled for August yet? Do we have anything on the books for August?
Yes.
So I haven't had an opportunity to take a look.
August 3rd is our next meeting.
So our next meeting with August 3rd, I'd like to know the committee's thoughts on whether or not we should return to in-person school committee meetings in the event, you know, we, we are looking to try to get students and staff and faculty back in person. And I think it's, it would, it's important that at some point, we, we look to return to in-person sessions. I'm not sure if August 3rd would be, you know, is the best date. But anyone, anyone care to share their opinions on it? Dr. Jenkins?
I'm always willing to share opinions. My opinion, no, I think we should remain virtual because here's why. We should be doing, as a community, every single thing we can do virtually. Again, no bars, no, right, like indoor stuff, so that we can stop the spread of this disease to allow for our schools to open, right? That's our position on campus, right? Every work that can be done remote should and shall be done remote so that we can prioritize education. So in my book, I know people like to talk about the optics. I don't care about the optics. What I care about is getting our kids and our staff safely back in school. And if that means, you know, we, we can't meet in person, that's fine with me. I will, you know, I don't go to bars. I stay away from people because I really, really want my kids to go back to school. Can I tell you that? They're killing me here. No, seriously though, I would vote that we stay remote because I do think that's No, seriously, though, I would vote that we stay remote, because I do think that's what we should all be doing, remote as much as is humanly possible.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and I have no doubt you, you will share your opinion. Mrs. Wade?
Yes, she convinced me, so yes, I think we should do it remotely, good job, Shannon, like, so, and she makes a great point, you know, we, and she talks about the optics, but there are optics to continuing, you know, in this fashion as well, and showing that it's actually workable, and it's also, I think, very user-friendly, for people who have gotten used to this, you know, the Zoom meetings, and able to follow, they can see all of us, and I, and I, and I think it, again, you know, it translates, keep it going, so she convinced me.
I think, I think Mary, Ms. Wade is also is as desperate as I am to get her kids out of the house, and we'll also.
Have you picked up on that?
I'm sure they can get out of the house.
Yes, yes, certain 16-year-old, take her.
Perfect, thank you, Mrs. Wade. Mrs. Ammaral, did you have your hand up?
Let's take a bet on who's really ready to have their kids go back, I think I've got it. I'm distracted right now due to it, but, no, I completely, 100% agree that I, I would want to stay remote.
Oh, Mr. Nunes, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I have no, I have no preference either way, I mean, we can set it up in the library, or somewhere, you know, with the, the six-foot distance, and, you know, wear the masks and everything, we want to continue to meet via Zoom, I'm good with that too, so, it's kind of obvious, Chris, that however which way you or I were thinking about it, we're outvoted, so I think we're sticking with Zoom.
Nope, and, and I am honestly, I'm okay with that, I.
I'm okay with that, seriously.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to give the committee the opportunity to, to share their thoughts, so.
Thank you for that.
And while I have you, Mr. Nunes, you had asked me to, and forgive me, I, I was, I spoke to Dr. Gifford this afternoon, and I forgot to pass along your question to her, so Dr. Gifford may not be prepared, but go ahead.
I was just wondering, Dr. Gifford, we had talked about the remote, and the makeup, makeup tests as part of the remote learning plan back in May, and I think I asked this back, you know, in May or something, if, somewhere down the line, we could get a, an update as to the number of students that actually put in for, to make up tests, especially in a high school, and, you know, what if any of them actually did take those tests?
I did get that information from Mr. Tebow, and now don't have it in front of me, so.
No, that's fine.
I'll get that out to you soon.
That's fine, no problem, I'm good with that.
Yep.
My apologies, Mr. Nunes, for that.
Nah, that's a minor, that's a minor problem, Chris.
Could I, could I follow up, Chris, on that? Mr. Nunes, were you referring to the, the MCAT?
No, no, I was, I was referring to, I was referring to students, you know, who need, who wished to make up a test, because, you know, they got a 65 on a test, and if we take the test and get a 75, maybe they get a, a B instead of a C+, just as a, for instance, so that, those are the makeups I was talking about.
I'm, I'm particularly interested in the conversation about the MCAT test, because I'm, we're in a really odd situation in my family, but my son has never taken the MCAT, because we were away in the, the spring of his sophomore year, he was supposed to sit for it in his junior year, but then pandemic happened, and so now he's going into his senior year, never having taken the MCAT, which is a requirement for graduation. So, we, is, is there any idea what the MCAT will look like? I would assume there, are they gonna have a full testing in the fall, like, maybe you don't know yet, but I'm slightly panicked, because I know he can't graduate if there's not a fall test, because the spring results don't come in soon enough, and I'm sure there are some students who, they didn't pass their, their sophomore year, who are in a similar situation, like they need to take a, the test in order to graduate.
Dr. Gifford or Ms. Roy?
Yeah, I see Ms. Roy, I think she wants, she's been looking at all of that, I see her leaning.
I saw her unmute herself.
Yeah, we, we don't have the, we don't have the full plan yet, but I know they're considering making adjustments, I know folks want to, it to be waived, but they haven't had a decision yet. In a normal year, you know, there's always the requirement to take the 10th grade test, but in a normal year, there would be a November makeup as well, so I don't know when we'll be there, and, and whether they'll offer that. So, we'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. All I have are. Do we have any public comments for the, for tonight's meeting?
We do. We have an email from David Errands, and he writes, "I hear people discussing putting the decision of rebranding to a diversity committee, instead of holding a public meeting, virtual or otherwise. Can we hear, can we have this answered clearly? Will there be public hearings on the mascot?"
Thank you, Kate, is there any other public comment?
No.
Okay, so I will, I will leave that as we are, we have the item on our agenda next meeting of the creation of an equality committee, and at this point in time, we, there's no plan for a public, a public meeting, or any kind of public meeting. That's not to say, that may not happen, but right now, there is no plan on that, until after we hear from our newly established, hopefully, the next couple of weeks, our newly established committee. That being said, our next meeting date is August 3rd at 4:00 PM, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So, I got a, I got a motion by Mr. Nunes, do I have a second? A second by Mrs. Wade, on the motion, any other discussion? Roll call, Ms. Gunther?
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Mary Wade?
Yes.
Kathleen Ammaral?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone, for your time, have a great night.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good job.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, good night.
Jim, you got any warrants, or you're gonna be good right now?